Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board of April 19th, 2023. We start our meeting by doing the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everybody. A couple of notes here is that we have two exits, one in the back of the room, one to my immediate right. Please do not take the elevator. If you need assistance getting down the stairs, somebody will be there to help you. In addition to that, anybody that has electronic devices, if you'd please put them on either mute or vibrate, that would be appreciative. And with that, I'm going to introduce the board. And before I introduce the board, where do you go? I'm going to have Mr. Healy. Joe Temper has resigned. He just had a baby, aren't they? We welcome his -- good luck to that. And plus, he also started a new job. So with that, we have an opening. So we have a vacant spot. So tonight, we're going to be sitting Mr. Dan Healy in his place. So with that, I'll start introducing the rest of the members of the board. On my far right, we have the Director of Planning, Mr. George Ciarras.
Good evening.
And then we have --
Someone stole a chair from the building.
So also on my right, we have the Town Administrator Representative, and that's Randy Chase.
Good evening.
Full Board Member, Mr. Richard Malaby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have the Town Council Representative, Mr. Dave Grenese.
Good evening.
Way in the back, we have Assistant Director Liz Rovedoo.
Good evening.
To my right, we also have the Vice Chair, Dave Nelson.
Good evening.
And way to the left, the man behind the curtain on the screen is Roman Proventia.
Good evening.
And then we have the Town Engineer, Mr. Mark LaRue.
Good evening.
We have Full Board Member, Mr. Chris Feinhauer.
Good evening.
And then again, Mr. Dan Healy.
Good evening.
And we have Full Board Member, Mr. Mark Connors.
Good evening.
And we have our Secretary, Mr. Andy Myers.
Hi.
And I'm the Chairman, John O'Connor. So again, welcome, everybody. And with that, I've got to read about the virtual why we can do Zooming and so forth. So the Planning Board voluntarily continues to offer remote participation. If any member of the Planning Board participates remotely, all our votes will be by roll call. To attend this meeting, you can either use your computer or a smart device, and you can go on www.zoom.us. And then when you do that and get Zoomed, you enter the meeting ID 754-663-912. And also, you can call in on 646-558-8656. So with that, we'll start with our administrative business. There's no escrow today. We have approval of the minutes of April 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a first or a second. Is there any changes, modifications, any corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. The minutes have passed. There is no correspondence, so our secretary's excused tonight. The other business we have --
No excuse, you're going to be staying.
Thank you.
The other business we have is the Planning Board's policy and procedures. In the last meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, I requested that anybody had any changes, recommendations, and so forth, please forward them to Elizabeth. And since we see none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the current policy and procedures as written.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So our policy and procedures will continue as is. And again, one of the key things is that every year, we require somebody to take one of the courses that is offered by either the New Hampshire Municipality Association regarding land use, and also from the BEA, which is the Business and Economic -- I forget what the A stands for. You got it? So that passes. So we're going to start our public hearing section, and it's going to be to review a proposal for trimming of trees on English Range and Stark Road by Eversource. We tabled it from March 15th because Eversource was -- their tree people were a little tied up. We had like little 17, 18 inches of snow, and I can't tell you how many trees are down in my -- still in my backyard. So --
Yeah. Allison Mark from Eversource, she's going to just give a detail on English Range Road and Stark Road and what trees are going to be removed and what you're doing. So Allison, you can take over.
And before you start, I live not too far away from English Range Road, and I got this yesterday. So obviously, I'm going to see these tree guys coming down in my area, cutting the -- maybe I can get to work in my backyard. But this was very nice, nice work. I like that.
That is our mailers that we send out. So it's a -- we call it a 45-day mailer. So we send out the mailers, and everyone has about 45 days to respond to the mailer with any questions or concerns that they may have. As far as English Range Road and Stark Road, we are just trimming because last year, we did do a whole bunch of hazard removals. So that is all that we are doing on English Range and Stark Road, is just trimming.
I do have a question because I drove down there again.
And you're correct, there's a lot -- about 95% of it looks good, except when you get near the Ball Farm. And it looks like some of those trees are about 200 years old and about maybe four yards in girth. If you have to touch those, do you do work with the people who own that land?
Yes, we work with private abutters. If there's anything that's on their private property that we deem to have a removal, we do approach them and let them know what we would do, and they would sign a form, letting us know that they're okay with us doing the removals.
Okay. So we need to --
I just have a question.
Oh, we've got to open the public hearing first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
So we have a motion to open the public hearing. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So we have now opened the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this particular item here, please come forward. And if you come forward, you have to name your name and your address. So seeing nobody rushing up front.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So the public hearing is closed. Mr. Connors, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question. So usually, you guys do a great job, but I have seen trimming operations where, you know, it ends up being like an L-shaped tree, where they leave limbs under the line, but they take everything above it. Some of them just look ridiculous. Other times, they trim up the whole side of the tree. Is there an option for a landowner, you know, to kind of tell you what they want in front of their property? Because, I mean, your regulations say, you know, eight feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, but that can really leave an ugly mess in front of someone's house sometimes. So is there an option for them to kind of talk with you guys about what they would prefer? Like, take the tree or, you know, clear the whole side of the tree? Don't leave it looking like a crazy, you know, topiary thing?
Yes, there is. With that mailer, there's a checkbox where they can check to be consulted, and we'll come out and we'll discuss what the customer's concerns are. But yes, unfortunately, trees and wires don't really go good together, and that's why they have the C shape. But all of our crews are trained to make the proper cuts on the trees. It's just kind of looks, as some people call it, a Dr. Seuss-type tree.
Yeah, that's what I say. In some cases, you'd rather just have the tree taken down. I don't know if that's an option for them to ask you just to take the tree if you're going to do that.
Yes, they're more than welcome to reach out to our customer service and ask us, and myself or someone will come out and answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they'll get to my house here pretty soon because I'm the last one there, and that's a transformer. And when the tree hit that at 3:00 PM, 3:00 AM and blew up, I think I came up that far out of bed.
Yeah.
So with that, any other further questions?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no other questions from the board, I'd like to make a motion to move to approve pursuant to RSA 231:158, the trimming of trees on English Range Road and Stark Road by Eversource Energy for the proposed work area as outlined in the correspondence provided by Eversource, received by the town on February 15, 2023.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll give you my address to you. With that, we'll go to the next public hearing, which is JAL LLC PID 11059-00630 Danielle's Road. Next, with PID 11058-00840 Danielle Road. The Denali Builders LLC PID 11059-01022 Danielle Road. This is an acceptance and review of a lot line adjustment. So George, if you --
Okay. Mr. Chairman, real quick, I think this is an easy one. As you said, the owners are Denali Builders LLC. Tom and Steve Landon are here. For the new members, this is the new development up the bypass 28. Danielle Road is being extended, so it's an internal lot line change between 30, 40, and 22 Danielle, which are getting owned by Denali. So no town departments are required for lot line changes. There is a waiver for the soil mapping. We would not require that for the lot line change. So pretty simple. Staff would recommend approval. And Neil McCarthy is here, the surveyor, if there's questions.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir.
Neil McCarthy from Promise Land Survey.
Okay, so just for your information, what we'll end up doing is we'll let you explain the lot line adjustments in here.
Yep.
Then we will open, we'll accept jurisdiction, and then we'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then we'll have you come back if there's any questions from any abutters that may be here. So with that, you get the floor.
All right. If you turn to the second page in the plan set, really on this page, you're going to see all the moving parts of the project. So on Sheet 2, if you look toward the lower left, and with lot, map 11, Lot 5910, and lot, and map 11, Lot 588, which there's actually, it doesn't show up right in the title block, but we'll fix that with the final plan set. So there's a lot line adjustment there between those two lots. You'll see that there's a, you know, it's just under 5,000 square feet. So that's one of the, one of the changes. And that lot there already has an approved septic, and you can see that there's actually a foundation there. The second one is you move north above the, above map 11, Lot 588. We're basically swinging that line in between these two parcels, and the change is going to take place on map 11, Lot 596. And that one also has an approved septic on it. So we're just, that lot there was previously five acres, and it's going, well, 5.93 acres, and it's going down to 2.33 acres. And we did apply for subdivision approval for that because it's going below the five-acre minimum. So that's, that's basically it. It's just those three moving parts, really. The smaller one, and then kind of a consolidation of the larger lot, and then making Lot 59-6 below the five-acre minimum.
Okay. Can we have a --
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction. I move to accept jurisdiction of the lot line adjustment plan before the board for JAL LLC PID 11059-00630 Danielle Road, PID 10058-00840 Danielle Road, and Denali Builders LLC PID 1059-01022 Danielle Road.
Second.
So we have a motion to accept jurisdiction on a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, there is, due to the lot line, we do not need to do the regional impact, so I'm going to move to open the public hearing.
Let's do determination of regional impact first?
No, we, it's not required for a lot line. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Anybody wishing to speak on this particular case can please come forward, state your name and address.
I have online, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one online, no one coming up to the podium, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion passes. So the public hearing is now closed. There's no further questions from the audience for him to answer. We have a half-wave hand, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Connors.
When we're ready, I have a question. I'll make sure I'm understanding. So the, the, I guess to the north, the top lot line is being removed. Does that mean six and eight become one large lot? I don't see a new lot line. So there's, there's an adjustment at the bottom where you're shifting and putting a new lot line. You're cutting off the back end of, I guess, what is it now, six? You're creating that lot. But the one that goes between, I guess, what is six and eight now, just says removed. Is there, so is that becoming a large, one large lot in the back there? Is that what that's?
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the cover sheet, I kind of just focused in on where all the action takes place, basically, on that one page.
Yep.
But if you look at the cover sheet, that map 11, Lot 58-8, that's going to become that whole larger lot. So that's the line that I was saying is going to kind of swing down behind Lot 59-6. So that lot's going to become a 13-acre lot because it's, that line's being moved, and then it's going to be consolidated, really. I mean, it's a lot line adjustment, but it's a consolidation, kind of.
So we are entering up with one larger lot?
Yes, yeah.
In the back, is what I'm saying. That's all. Okay. Just wanted to make sure there wasn't a line missing there.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, this is kind of a clarification of terminology concern. On the cover sheet, it says lot line to be removed and new lot line, whereas on Sheet 2, it says boundary line to be adjusted and adjusted boundary line. And I don't know whether there's similar, I think the similar nomenclature unshot on Sheet 3. I would suggest that you be consistent, and lot line to be removed and new lot line seems a lot clearer to someone, you know, looking at this plot, you know, 30 years from now than adjusted and readjusted. So I'm going to suggest you adopt that terminology for the lot lines that are going away and the lot lines that are being added, as is used on the cover sheet.
Do you want to add that to the conditional use? Do you want to get back to the approved pursuant to on the next page?
Yeah, thank you. That's good observation.
So we'll attack the waivers right now, then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant the waivers. There's no issues with public works, though, right? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the waiver from LDCR Section 170-24A Alpha 12J John to approve his map and as a lots proposed to be serviced by municipal water, and as such, lot loading requirements are diminished. At review of the waiver request, the board finds that strict conformity to the regulations would pose in that sense unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
Mr. Grenese?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Couldn't see him back. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we've got that waiver passed. We've got the finding of facts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, finding of facts. I move to find the proposed plan does not alter existing conditions which would affect access to the lots, ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood remains unchanged as a result of the adjustment of the lot line.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we put Mr. Chase on the --
Yes.
And Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
Mr. Grenese?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to indicate that I think my mic has died.
I'm sorry?
Or something. Yeah, it's just not --
Is it plugged in good?
Something wrong with my mic.
We don't have anybody to fix it.
All right, I'll yell.
All right, Dave's, slide over close to Dave.
Use that.
Hectical difficulties. All right. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman III expedited review with the following conditions, subject to the owner's signature. Correct the title block to reflect the appropriate parcel ID numbers. 11058 should be 11058-008. Review Note 3 on the cover sheet to ensure the appropriate parcel ID is being referenced. Subject to onsite inspection by the town's engineer. Establish escrow for the setting of bounds or certify the bounds have been set. Note approved waivers on the plan. Obtained written approval from the planning director or designated GIS disk is received and is operable, and it complies with LDCR Section 170-24.C. Subject to receipt of operable state or local permits relating to the project. Conditions precedent shall be met within six months. Submission of the appropriate recording fees payable to the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds, which includes the $21 L chip fee and recording fees for the mailer notice and decision. And finally, to make the terminology with regard to lot lines that are being extinguished and lot lines that are being added, the same as is used on Sheet 1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
Mr. Grenese?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. You have acceptance on that there. Anybody aggrieved by this decision has 30 days to come back here and request a rehearing. I was over there yesterday, and your crews up here are doing a great job. They look wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Cinema Properties LLC PID 082801 Ashley Drive. It's an acceptance/review site plan amendment, redevelopment of a commercial property for industrial warehouse use in addition of 13,000 square feet. George, yeah?
Yep, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, as you indicated, the applicant is Cinema Properties LLC. The project, I think we have the name because the name of the company was on the plan, so I, is it okay to say the name of the company? Ralph, is it okay to say the name of the company, and they are on the plans publicly now? Are you, is it okay?
It's in the public record.
It's in the public record on the plans? Okay, all right, it's on the plans. Okay, thank you. It's on the plan. So if you see CHI overhead doors, Ashley Drive, it's the old movie cinema for the people in the plaza who know where that's located. Site currently, the site currently contains an abandoned movie theater and parking lot. The existing, existing movie theater building is intended to remain and be converted into a warehouse distribution facility. There will also be a new 3,000-square-foot loading dock area and an additional 10,000-square-foot addition of warehouse space for future expansion. Again, the project will be for the redevelopment of the former commercial space into the warehouse space. Properties located in the industrial Ford zoning district, which is a permitted use. All town departments, fire, police, public works, coenforcement have signed the plan. There is a waiver letter from Bowler Engineering, which I'll let the engineer get into the details in a second, for parking dimension requirements, high intensity soil mapping, wetlands, exterior lighting, and a landscape plan. Again, staff would support the waivers. It's an existing site. They do have a state permit, New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit, and New Hampshire DES sewer extension permits. They are pending for approvals. And staff would recommend approval of both the waivers and the site plan application. And I'll turn it over to Keith Caron from Bowler Engineering.
Before we turn it over to you, sir, George, question for you.
Yeah.
Why did the fire department sign off on this?
Why did the fire department sign off?
They didn't sign it. If you look at the block, this is not applicable. And I know there's some issues.
Oh, other way around, sorry. It should be conservation isn't applicable, fire did sign, David Eastman signed it. I think, I think we put the lines in the, if you look at COMCOM, it should be the other way around.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, David Eastman signed it. I spoke to David, so thank you. Good catch.
Go ahead.
Can you just turn to page CE 301? It's the layout sheet. Thank you.
Would you get the font any smaller?
Excuse me? Great. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you for the introduction. You carried, covered a lot of this information I was already going to cover. So as everyone knows, this is the abandoned cinema. Two expansions, one in the back is 3,000 square feet. The purpose of that is for six loading docks for tractor trailers. And then there's another 10,000 square feet addition proposed on, that's planned left on here. Important to note is basically only about 25, 26% of the existing site is going to be touched. The rest of the site that's actually not shown here above the page is going to be, remain unchanged. The impervious surface is only going to be increased by about, that's actually less than 6,000 square feet, actually 1.3%. So to handle that, that's why there is a stormwater detention infiltration basin shown again to the plan left. So therefore, that's the only stormwater improvements that really are proposed, besides also two loading, in the loading docks, two trench drains that will tie out to the existing system. So we provided as part of the application, there was a drainage memo showing that we're meeting pre and post stormwater analysis. The utilities, water, sewer, again, that's all to remain unchanged. The present connections to the existing building are going to remain. The other important things to just to note is if we wanted to run through just the waivers, first one is just the parking. The existing parking spaces out there, all nine by, nine by 18, and it's actually presently 511 parking spaces. With the addition of the buildings, we actually lose some parking spaces, it goes down to 382. But per the requirements for this use, we actually only need, I believe it's 40 parking spaces. So again, stay consistent with the nine by 18 spaces. We wanted to leave those nine by 18, and the proposed spaces also be nine by, nine by 18. So that's the first waiver request. The other waiver request is for the his mapping for the soils. Again, knowing that we're only increasing the impervious by less than 6,000 square feet, we use the soils mapping, which we're confident with, and then propose, again, that basin to address that small increase in impervious area. The other waivers for the wetlands, as noted, the Conservation Commission didn't need to review this. We're not impacting the wetlands or any of the resource areas associated with that. Again, being a redevelopment, site lighting, the idea is to utilize the existing site lighting that is out there. There's a few lights that are being relocated. I believe there's three of them as part of this application. And then the fifth one would be the landscaping requirement, again, being a redevelopment. The, we're not actually disturbing a lot of the area. The landscaping can remain the same. And then as that was brought up, I believe we're putting some stone around with the new part of the building, as was requested during the TSC review. So, that's the five waivers that are listed in the letter and that we're requesting. Traffic, just to note, there was also in the application was a memo that was done by Van Ness Associates. The trips is tremendously reduced. This use has a lot less trips than a cinema does, so there'll be less traffic on the roads and accessing this site with this redevelopment. I don't know if there's anything else I wanted to add, if I obviously open up to questions or...
Okay, with that, then we need to accept jurisdiction.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction. I move to accept jurisdiction of the site plan application before the board for Cinema Properties LLC, PID 082801 Ashley Drive.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Gunez?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. That's been accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of the termination of regional impact pursuant to RSA 36:56. The Board finds the proposal for the presented, proposal as presented at this time meets the definition of a development of regional impact.
Should we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Going down to Mr. Chase.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Affirmative motion, negative vote.
No, this project does not meet the standards of a regional impact.
Mr. Mallaby?
No, for the same reasons as Mr. Chase.
Mr. Gunez?
No, for the same reasons as my two other fellow Board members.
Mr. Nelson?
No regional impact.
Mr. Feinhauer?
No regional impact.
Mr. Healy?
No regional impact.
Mr. Connors?
Nope.
Mr. Myers?
No, same reasons.
And we go with the same reasons that Mr. Chase said, finally. So, with that passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Public hearing is now open. Anybody having questions regarding this particular case, please come forward, state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one online or anybody rushing up to the podium, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes. We got in the waivers. Has anybody objected if it's all read at the same time? Because it's pretty straightforward. Or would you prefer to do one at a time?
We have some questions here for the Board first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Do you have a question?
I do. So, just where they are putting an addition onto the rear, looking at this back page here, it looks like, I see a 25-foot setback line. Just want to confirm, that's from the new addition, not from the existing building to the, to the lot line on the side? And you're calling that the side setback, although I don't think it matters. It's more the rear setback to me, I guess, the building faces...
It's actually 33 feet if you look at the actual drawing.
Yeah, I just say, but that, is that, my question there was going to be, is the property here, I know all of this is super wet around there in between, like, you know, is that considered a, and the point that conservation didn't sign off, is that wetlands? Do we have any additional setbacks? Or are we good? I guess it's just my question.
Sorry, it's good, Mark, because you see the existing, you can drive, as you know, you can drive around the back of that building.
Yep.
So, that existing driveway isn't changing at all, so that's why there's no impact to the wetlands and it wouldn't apply.
So, yeah, the pavement's not changing, so it's good.
That's the pavement, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to double-check that. That's the only thing I saw. Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a finding we're proposing to make regarding architectural design regulations. And while the compliance level is medium-high for industrial districts, I don't see any proposed drawings of the new additions, only existing building photos. Can you tell me what the new construction will look like relative to the existing building?
Sure. We have, should be in part of the package, there was a elevation view. And then, also, Kerry can probably maybe speak more about that. But there was a, I'm not sure if you have that. If not, I have a board that shows the elevation. It's a rendering. So, it shows the existing building, and it also shows the both additions on that.
Do you know where that is in the plan set?
I'm not sure if you have it. I can grab that.
I didn't see it.
Okay, I can grab it.
Not a big deal, but it'd be, you know, nice to have. It's part of the record.
I don't think it's in here.
So, just what, Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept supplemental information on this case from the applicant.
Second.
We have a motion for acceptance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Accepted.
Thank you.
While we were waiting, Mr. LaRue, any questions from DBW?
No, everything was addressed from TRC comments, and it's a minor alteration of site like the applicant stated as far as drainage and rerouting some of the water from impacts from the back on the docks.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Just one more question, but again, I'm just curious. So, CHI Overhead Door is the, is the company or the applicant, is this warehouse to be used for overhead doors? Or are we seeing multiple uses within a warehouse here?
All right. Alan Mello, this...
Yeah, that's fine. And more just, you know, to the point of like, what kind of, I guess if it's a multi-use warehouse, what, you know, what's going to be in there? Hazardous stuff, that sort of thing.
Sir, please identify yourself.
Alan Mello with Cinema Properties LLC, Managing Member. CHI Overhead Door will be occupying the entire building. They will. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I think now back...
All right, so...
Back to the waivers.
Mr. Chairman, there's no questions. I just want to ask Mr. LaRue, any issues with the five waivers?
He had cleared everything already.
He did?
Yep. But go ahead.
Does anybody mind if I do all five all at the same time or take it separate?
I've seen all the nodding in the correct way, so I would say go ahead.
All right. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the following waivers. Move to grant a waiver from LDCR Section 17063, C Charlie 1, which requires parking spaces to be a minimum of nine feet times 20 feet. The existing site contained a former movie theater, which spaces are, that are nine feet by 18 feet. Only 40 space are required for this use, and 382 spaces are being provided. The restripping of existing parking space is required to be at nine feet times 18 feet to be keeping in with existing conditions. At review of the waiver request, the Board finds that strict conformity to these regulations would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. I also move, this is waiver number two, move to grant a waiver from LDCR Section 17061A Alpha 12, HIS mapping. The site plan documents indicate the appropriate locations of the onsite soil types within the project limit of work. Existing utilities will be utilized, including sanitary sewer and water. At review of the waiver request, the Board finds that strict conformity to the regulations would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Mr. Chairman, I move to grant waiver number three. Move to grant a waiver from LDCR Section 17061A Alpha 13, wetland, wetlands mapping. Existing wetland resource areas are generally located on the southern portion of the property, north of Manchester Road, within the northwest corner of the site. The project does not propose any work within or proximity of mapping, map locations of the existing wetland resources area. All work will be within existing development limits of the property. At review of the waiver request, the Board finds the specific circumstances relative to the plan or conditions of the land in such plan indicate that the waiver will properly, will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Mr. Chairman, I move to waiver number four. Move to grant waiver LDCR Section 161A Alpha 20 to not approve, to not approve exterior lighting provisions in details of lighting fixtures. The project proposes to maintain existing site lighting to the extent practical. The, three existing light poles will be relocated. Proposed building lights will match existing building wall packs. At review of the waiver request, the Board finds specific circumstances relative to the plan and conditions of the land in such plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Mr. Chairman, I move to grant waiver number five. Move to grant a waiver from LDCR Section 17061A Alpha 21 to not provide a landscape plan. The project involves construction of two building additions, proposed loading areas, and reconfiguration of the existing parking area to accommodate, to accommodate same in the project areas and compasses 26% of the site. Modified existing landscape islands will consist of ground cover to match existing conditions. River rock will be placed adjacent to the building, and landscape features are noted in Sheet C Charlie-301. At review of the waiver request, the Board finds the specific circumstances relative to the plan or conditions of the land in such indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Nicely done.
Take a breath.
Start with Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Gunez?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, got that section done. Thank you very much, Mr. Gunez.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move regarding our architectural design regulations to find that pursuant to LDCR Section 170-85, that the application as presented demonstrates substantial compliance with the architectural design regulations. This property is located in the Industrial Ford District and meets a medium-high level of compliance as outlined in Section 170-84.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Gunez?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Finding of facts.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move the finding of the facts. The Board finds the proposed plan provides safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access, and the design and construction of the driveways and walkways are adequate to accommodate the anticipated volume of traffic proposed by the development. The Board finds the proposed parking plan is adequate for the site and meets the parking density requirements for the use. The Board finds the stormwater management as proposed is designed to control the post-develop, post-development runoff, so it does not exceed pre-development runoff. The Board finds exterior lighting, solid waste storage and snow storage provisions and erosion and sediment control provisions are adequate.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. No questions from the Board, seeing none. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Gunez?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman, prior to motion for approval, I'd like to ask whether any members of the Board have additional conditions they would like to suggest to be added. Hearing none, then, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman 1, completed application with the following conditions: subject to the owner's signature, subject to onsite inspection by the towns engineer, establish appropriate escrow as required to complete the project, note approved waivers on the plan, obtain written approval from the planning director or designate that the GIS disc is received and is operable and complies with LDCR Section 170-61(c), subject to the receipt of applicable state or local permits relating to the project, and all conditions precedent to be met within six months.
Second.
Should we have a motion? We have a second. Any further questions from the Board? Seeing none. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Gunez?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Congratulations. Anybody else is aggrieved by this decision? You have 30 days to come back and request another hearing. Good luck here, and glad to see that's going to be finally, that void's going to be filled in. Good luck on your business.
Sad to see the end of the, end of the cinemas, though. They're going down, huh?
Been in there many times. Nobody goes to the movies anymore?
No, I know. That's why I said it's tough.
The next item on the agenda is the Pinkerton Academy, PID 43001, 5 Pinkerton Street. Acceptance and review of the site plan. It's replacement of the social studies wing with 31,755 square-foot building. At this time, I have Judge bring us up-to-date on this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sorry. Yep, as you indicated, the applicant is Pinkerton Academy. The project is the Robert Frost Social Studies Wing located 5 Pinkerton Street. Again, the purpose of the plan is for the replacement of the social studies wing with a new 31,555 square-foot building, which will be the pupil services building. The property is located in the medium-high-density residential district. All town departments have signed and reviewed, have reviewed and signed the plan. There is one waiver request from VHB Engineering, a letter dated April 3rd, for the curb raise and landscape island between parking spaces. I'll let the engineer explain that in more detail. There's no state permits required, and the staff would recommend approval of both the waiver requests and the site plan application. And I will turn it over to Eric. Eric, I hope I'm saying your last name right. Is it Girard?
Girard.
Girard, from VHB Engineering. And Tim Powers from Pinkerton.
And Dr. Powers. Welcome.
Dr. Powers, thank you.
I just want to check with our man behind the curtain. Is there anybody online? You do? Okay, at this point here, I want to remind the audience both at home and in present that this is just a review and acceptance of the building that Pinkerton's proposing and nothing further than that. So, with that, go ahead and explain your process here in your building.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight to share the proposed new building that we have. We can go to, it's probably Slide 3, we can show the existing... So, the highlighted right there, we have what is the existing social studies wing. Those portals that were put up in the 1970s that have housed many different classes over the years. They were English, they hold CTE classes, and currently, they hold social studies classes as well as two of our more complex and year-round special ed programs, our NECC and our ACT programs that are in those buildings. This is just another view that you can see of where it fits within the landscape. It is the building that's right along Pinkerton Street. And part of what we had done was a space audit and looked at different solutions, because in particular with two of our, those two special education programs, looking at the space that's required for those programs and for the students in those programs, over time, the programs have changed. NECC, the New England Center for Children is one of our 12-month programs. They work with artistic students. There were students that were out of, sent out of district up until about five years ago when we added the program at the request of the Dairy School District. And those students are now able to be educated all the way through their education up to age 22 now, within the school district prior to coming to Pinkerton and then throughout Pinkerton. Same with their peers. So, looking at the needs of those students as long, as well as the ACT students, the spaces, space required has changed for what their needs are, both educationally, socially, and transitionally. So, in looking at the existing space and then moving forward into what this new space is in order to adequately and properly educate them and help them with their conditions, this new building is what would take to do that. We looked across campus at all, all of our existing buildings and look at all different places that we could house these programs, and based on the needs of these programs, there were no other existing spaces that we had. So, the, those two programs, and then obviously we have the social studies classrooms as well, that would be on the third floor, and we'll get into some of the details on that. But just a quick overview for the ACT and NECC, they are programs where it's not just the core academics, but also looking at physical and occupational therapy that are needed for these students. So, there's lots of different types of equipment, different types of spaces that are needed for individual needs, group needs, and wider classroom needs, both with their peers and then by the, within the program. And then, I'll turn it over to Eric, he can talk about the, some of the site.
safety, student safety. There is the large expansive curb cut on Pinkerton Street in front of the shepherd building, which does propose safety challenges with the parking essentially right on the edge of the pavement of the traveled way. That is 125-foot curb cut. And then, in general, just poor circulation, poor drop-off in the area for students pickup, people using the area roadways to wait. So the proposed design will help that circulation drop-off student experience. It is a previously developed site, little to no stormwater management, and beneath that existing building, there are some utilities, drainage, and sewer that are going right through that building. So moving into the proposed conditions, up on the screen is the proposed site plan, and it is a 32,000 square foot building, give it a little bit less than that, on three stories. So the overall footprint of this building is generally less than half of the existing building that's out there. So we are afforded a little bit more room in the area to do some other site features, modify the parking, modify the circulation, and provide a better student, visitor, and staff experience and circulation at the front of the building. We are modifying the parking fields, and a primary goal of the school is to try to better define that space where the public can go and park versus where the students are moving in between classrooms, really trying to define that space. Overall, looking at primarily reducing that 125-foot curb cut, making it a more traditional 24-foot wide space, providing pedestrian crossing safety, eliminating that parking that was backing out, and also providing a more traditional drop-off and pickup for cars to circulate in front of the building. Overall, we are reducing impervious areas compared to existing conditions as well by about 10,000 square feet. And then, another driver for some of the circulation and access was coordinating with the fire department, and making sure that we had the adequate turning radii in and around the new building, as well as accessing their existing routes around the existing buildings and through our project. For the utility improvements out in the project, we aren't connecting into any new public services, it's all reconnecting into the existing water, sewer, gas that are out on site today. Now, it'll be a new transformer, new generator to support the building. And then stormwater management is probably the main utility that is being upgraded and coordinating through the TRC process. We did provide some additional stormwater treatment, primarily for regulations regarding MS4 permitting, the town and area regulations, as well as being able to meet the alteration of terrain permit requirements. We aren't subject to the permit, but we're getting close to the threshold, so if there's another project contiguous or in close proximity, we would need to demonstrate that we are meeting those standards. So we are looking at two new stormwater infiltration basins, providing about 4,300 cubic feet of overall recharge in the area, and that's meeting total suspended solids and phosphorus removal reduction requirements for the area, while also promoting the groundwater recharge in the area. Like to move forward into the construction phasing, as this is, you know, an active campus, and with this existing social studies wing building, we are looking to demolish a portion of that building while keeping the easterly side occupied during the construction of the new building. We've coordinated with Ekman Construction, the general contractor for the construction of the project, to come up with construction logistics, coordinating with the town staff. So this shows the general first phase that we're looking at, essentially the summer of 2023 through December of 2024. So a good portion of the site will be fenced off while they build the new building, demolishing portions of the existing structure, and student safety and the maintaining those pedestrian routes are shown in yellow above. So the second phase of the building will be approximately in spring of 2025, when the new building is constructed and occupied, allowing students to use that building. Then we'd cordon off the other side and take the rest of the remainder of that social studies wing down, and allow us to complete the construction of the existing park, the new parking field. And then the final would be a wrap-up, essentially a phase three of just kind of final paving and striping, once the contractors are out of there, to make sure everything's looking With that, I'd like to hand it over to Jay to go over the building design.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me here today. I'm Jay Dougherty with La Valley Bringsing Architects, and I want to talk briefly about the architecture of the building, what the facades look like and what the plan is, if I could quickly do that. This is what the building's gonna look like. It is a three-story building, as you know. This is traveling up Pinkerton Street, traveling west. You can see in the back, in the distance of this, in the gray, is where that academy building is, you'd see in the distance there. The building is basically three stories with three classrooms wide by three classrooms wide, so it's a perfect square building, basically a cube, three stories by three classrooms each way. As you can see here, it's very, it's a very simple design with using brick and block, very durable materials that tie into the aesthetics of the Pinkerton campus, and a very affordable material that also has longevity, that will last a long time. The little pieces you see that are a little different here are the stair towers and the entry forms that pop out a little bit, just to give it some character, and to understand where you should enter and where you should be using this building. So you see those pieces there. This view here is coming down through campus, so on your right would be the low building, on your left is the shepherd building. And as you travel down through campus, you'll see that there's a lot more green space here, because basically we've taken the square footage of what that social studies, long one-story wood-framed building was, and now built a three-story building to compact that footprint and give more green space back. Space for students and space to be outside is part of this. As you approach, this is where a majority of the students would be entering the building, into a lobby space with a decorative feature in that space. Really quickly about the plans, as you see here, there are the first level here, the lower part of the screen here, that's where Pinkerton Street is. The view I was just talking about is on the right side, where you see the red arrow coming in. That's the view where you, that you would, students would be entering through campus. Students that would be dropped off on buses or vans to use some of the ACT programs and NEC programs would be using the drop-off zone in the front of the building at the lower part. So this lower level is the ACT learners, which are just different learners. They have specialized spaces. Some of the spaces are our life skills lab and other specialized classrooms. As Dr. Powers pointed out before, there are some small breakout spaces with specialized OT and PT equipment in those. And the other space you also see here is a nursing suite that would serve this building and also serve the rest of the campus. The floor above is the NEC classrooms. The majority of these, the four on the lower part of the page that you see little breakout rooms in, are used by those students. Again, different learners that would be using those spaces. And then the two and the three at the very top are our social studies classrooms that are also in this building. The upper floor is all social studies classrooms, so you see eight social studies classrooms in that, and also an office, and some staff rooms. In the core, we have restroom facilities and elevator. So that's kind of the quick overview of what the plan is. Back to the site really quickly, as I pointed out before, we've really compact this building and just tried to give more green space back to the campus and to the students, and try to move that, the circulation of vehicles that are, is in the center of campus right now to the outskirts of campus by working on this building. With that, that is the architecture part, and I think I will hand it back over to Dr. Powers.
Before we accept jurisdiction...
I was just gonna ask if you back up one slide, just real quick. This is the third floor here?
Correct.
Okay, so only one, no, two, two of the stairwells will go to the third floor, and the other remains at up.
Okay. Correct, yes. Dr. Powers, just a question. I know Pinkerton's unique. Is this considered a public school, quasi-public? How does the state list you as?
They list us as, we are an independent school, but we're a public academy, according to the Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So with that, do we want to accept jurisdiction?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, accept jurisdiction. I move to accept jurisdiction, the site plan application before the board for Pinkerton Academy, PID 43001, 5 Pinkerton Street.
Second. So we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Ganes?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Korners?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And before we go to the next one, I just wanna bring the attention to both any of the parties that are here, and also on the, on TV, watching at home, that this information that's being presented to us here is also more in-depth, as far, especially with the students and the special needs students. It's been on the Pinkerton website, I'm gonna hold up a couple of documents here. One is going back to December 14th, 2022, and then one goes to January 26th, 23. The newspapers have published their websites, but it is a Pinkerton website, and if you go on there, you get more in-depth information that you may want to take a look at, and bring up other issues that may not be coming in this issue here. So with that, do we have to do a regional impact?
Mr. Chair, as we go into the regional impact, George, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference, but I just noticed page two of two on the regional impact statement, we have the wrong lot kind of outlined, and showing the house across the street versus the main Pinkerton lot there, we just might wanna clear that up.
Yeah, just change that for the record, thank you, Mark.
Yeah. It's all Pinkerton, but yeah.
They had the most about it, surprise, surprise.
What's that?
It's the right lot, that's all that matters.
Oh, I thought it had a different number, too.
No.
Okay. Because at the top of the page, if you look at the highlight pop-out, that's actually parcel ID 43008, and we're talking about 001.
I'm so sorry, I made a mistake.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. That's why I didn't want us to get in trouble with the regional impact stuff.
No, because it's all the same.
Only one out of 10, yes.
It's all the same.
It is still the same, even though it has two IDs. Okay, great.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for regional impact. I move pursuant to RSA 36, colon 56, the board finds a proposal as presented at this time meets the definition of a development of regional impact.
Second. Do we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Ganes?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Korners?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And before we go to the next one, I just wanna bring the attention to both any of the parties that are here, and also on the, on TV, watching at home, that this information that's being presented to us here is also more in-depth, as far, especially with the students and the special needs students. It's been on the Pinkerton website, I'm gonna hold up a couple of documents here. One is going back to December 14th, 2022, and then one goes to January 26th, 23. The newspapers have published their websites, but it is a Pinkerton website, and if you go on there, you get more in-depth information that you may want to take a look at, and bring up other issues that may not be coming in this issue here. So with that, do we have to do a regional impact?
Mr. Chair, as we go into the regional impact, George, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference, but I just noticed page two of two on the regional impact statement, we have the wrong lot kind of outlined, and showing the house across the street versus the main Pinkerton lot there, we just might wanna clear that up.
Yeah, just change that for the record, thank you, Mark.
Yeah. It's all Pinkerton, but yeah.
They had the most about it, surprise, surprise.
What's that?
It's the right lot, that's all that matters.
Oh, I thought it had a different number, too.
No.
Okay. Because at the top of the page, if you look at the highlight pop-out, that's actually parcel ID 43008, and we're talking about 001.
I'm so sorry, I made a mistake.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. That's why I didn't want us to get in trouble with the regional impact stuff.
No, because it's all the same.
Only one out of 10, yes.
It's all the same.
It is still the same, even though it has two IDs. Okay, great.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for regional impact. I move pursuant to RSA 36, colon 56, the board finds a proposal as presented at this time meets the definition of a development of regional impact.
Second. Do we have a motion, we have a second. No questions regarding that? If not, Mr. Chase?
No, I do not believe that this meets the standard of being of regional impact.
Mr. Mallaby, can you repeat that?
No, for the same reasons, Mr. Chase.
Mr. Ganes?
I know for the same reasons as my two fellow members.
Mr. Nelson?
No regional impact.
Mr. Feinauer?
No regional impact.
Mr. Healy?
No regional impact.
Mr. Korners?
I hope I'm not too late. I don't think it has a regional impact as far as the building goes, but this is a regional school, which is gonna impact taxes in the various towns. Does that have any impact?
No, we're not, we don't deal with taxes.
Okay, thank you, then, no regional impact then, just wanna make sure that's clear.
Let somebody else deal with that.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Mr. Myers?
There's a memo in our materials from the staff by Elizabeth Robideau that very articulately points out that there is no regional impact, so based on that, I'll vote no.
The chair will follow suit with no regional impact, so thank you. So moving on.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, open the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, open the public hearing, there's a second, no further questions. With that, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Ganes?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feinauer?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Korners?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward and put your name and address out there so we can have it recorded.
So you've done rise online?
Nothing online? We have someone slowly approaching, almost recognizable.
Good evening.
It's a farmer pass.
Jim McGackren, 4 Brookview Drive. I'm just curious about the class of the building, since it will have an impact on people's taxes.
When you're finished, we bring him back, he can come back and speak to that, but that's not our purview.
I understand that, but just, you know, for the citizens of Derry, what's the class of the building and the potential tax impact?
Okay, I'll also let you know that it's in one of the documents that's online, too. Anybody else?
You can mail it online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one online and no one raising, coming up to the podium, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Let me go back this way here, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Mallaby?
Yes.
Mr. Ganes?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Korners?
Sure.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Public hearing's now closed, and so you can come back up here, and we did have a question from the audience, so if you can respond to that, that'd be appreciative.
Sure. As you said, all of the information we do have posted on our website, so there's very detailed information about the estimated costs in the budget for the project. The estimated budget we have for the project is, I believe it's $20.7 million that we have. So if you go to our website, you can see the detail and the breakdown on there.
And I also know that a few years back, you locked in at a very nice, low-interest rate as compared to what we're seeing right now.
Correct. We locked in at an interest rate that was 2 and 2.4%. Yes.
Couple of questions that I have. Obviously, you're keeping part of the building open during school for the kids to, yeah, the kids to, students, to take place within that frame. Is, I don't know if the fire department or police department had any concerns looking at that, because I was allowed to walk around there yesterday and seeing how it may get blocked off, because I was also observing the special drill you had last week, which moves a lot of children at a very rapid time, so could you address that? Is that gonna be secure enough, are you comfortable?
Yes, so we did, we did meet with Derry Police and Fire prior to getting any formal meetings and that, to have a conversation with them about what we were looking to do to get their feedback and input, and then through the TRC process and highway safety, Derry Police and Fire were involved with that, and we addressed any concerns that either of them had throughout the process. But we're well aware that it is gonna be construction going on during, during the school year, so being very cognizant of the safety that's of our students while doing that.
And the only last question I have, a lot of the information we have shows it to be in the Frost building, but all the information you presented tonight has it listed as Building 19.
We don't have an official name for it yet. It was the Robert Frost English Wing at one point in time, but then, over time, it's changed based on the classes that have been in it. So right now, it's been referred to as the social studies wing. So as we move forward with the project, at some point, there will be a name that is given to that building, but we do not have an official name such as the academy building or the shepherd building or the low building, anything like that for that.
Typically, the fire department, looking at all the other buildings yesterday, have letters designations, that one's gonna have, I'm assuming they're gonna want a letter designation.
Yeah, it will have a letter designation for only the town and Derry Fire Department, but also the state and 911 as well.
Thank you, you got a question?
I think I know with a lot of, a lot of college campuses, if a large enough donor steps up, they get the name on the building, so maybe you get some offset when the cost for, for you get a large enough donor to get the name.
If there is a large enough donor, that would definitely, definitely be, and looking in those conversations.
Yeah, and just, is the, and again, not necessarily, just out of curiosity, you mentioned this is phase one, like they're gonna leave the building up, then you're gonna take the building down, then you're gonna put all these nice walkways, is that price tag just for phase one, or does that get us all the way to this beautiful rendering that we're seeing type of thing?
The whole, the whole thing.
Okay, and there was another question I had, and it just went right up, I'm getting old.
You don't have it yet? I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Larue?
Yep.
And from town, the engineer, any comments?
No, all the utility information was addressed, and the plan looks like it's pretty clear to go.
Are you relocating the gas line that goes in that little jog between the old decrepit building and shepherd building?
We're not replacing that, no.
So we looked at the stormwater management improvements as if it was going to go through that review at some point, just to not handcuff and have to come back and retrofit the new stuff that just went in.
Okay, and I assume Mr. Leroux is on that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, can we go into grant the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the waiver. I move to grant the waiver, LDCR section 170-63A, Alpha 7, to not provide a curb grazed on landscape island, a minimum of 10 feet in width between groupings of 20 or more parking spaces. Granted the waiver will allow the applicant to facilitate more effective snow removal operations and maximize parking in close proximity and in front of the new building, keeping the parking lot design consistent with other parking fields within the campus. After review of the waiver, request the board find specific circumstances relative to the plan or conditions of the land in such plan indicate that the waiver will probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Malaby.
Yes.
Mr. Geneese.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Connors.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move with regarding to architectural design regulations to find that pursuant to LDCR section 170-85, that the application as presented demonstrates substantial compliance with the architectural design regulations. This property is located in the MHDR district and meets a high level of compliance as outlined in section 170-84.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. No further questions? Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Malaby.
Yes.
Mr. Geneese.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Connors.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read finding and facts. The board finds the proposed plan provides safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access in the design and construction of the driveways. Driveways and walkways are adequate to accommodate the anticipated volume of traffic proposed by the developer, development. The board finds the proposed parking plan is adequate for the site and meets the park intensity requirements for the use. The board finds the landscape plan meets the intent of the regulations. The board finds, the board finds a stormwater management as proposed is designed to control in post-development, control the post-development runoff so that it does not exceed pre-development runoff. The board finds utility construction standards are met. The board finds exterior lighting, solid waste storage and snow storage provisions and erosion and sediment control provisions are adequate. Move to agree with the above noted findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Malaby.
Yes.
Mr. Geneese.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Connors.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion to approve, I would like to ask members of the board, are there any other conditions that you would like to suggest we add?
Is there any granite?
Plan right somewhere?
Get my GED? Yeah, we're good.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve pursuant to RSA 676, colon 4, Roman 1, completed application with the following conditions: Subject to the owner's signature, subject to onsite inspection by the town's engineer, establish appropriate escrow as required to complete the project, note approved waivers on the plan, obtain written approval from the planning director or designee that the GIS disc is received and is operable and in compliance with LDCR section 170-61.C, subject to the receipt of applicable state and local permits relating to the project, and the conditions precedent shall be met within six months.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Malaby.
Yes.
Mr. Geneese.
Yes, and the granite thing is a little side joke. I've always asked for granite in previous things, so that's the case, but yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Feinhauer.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Connors.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations, but before I let you go, Dr. Powers, I'm going to put a plug in. I also sit on the net zero, and a suggestion I have, because we do a lot of solar, and now you know where I'm going with that, is I'd make a recommendation to build a garage, let the students pay for it, because they're paying for it at Hoodcroft, they're paying it across the street from Irving, and then you take the space where, like say, where the junior park, and you put solar panels up there, because as you're aware, hopefully, that town of Derry is doing that, and instead of us paying 22 cents a kilowatt, for the next 25 years, we'll be paying 6 cents a kilowatt.
We're actively looking at solar on campus, so.
And if net zero can be an assistance, because we've gone through this here, and we helped set up the one here, and I helped set up the one in Rockingham County right now.
I spoke with Mr. Moulton this morning, so, yes.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone is aggrieved by this decision, has 30 days to come back and ask for a rehearing. Congratulations, and it looks like it's going to round off that location up there. Very nice.
Thank you.
With that. I should turn the page. Okay, we go into a workshop to discuss proposed amendments to the Town of Derry zoning ordinance, Article 5 zoning map and boundaries, section 16530, to redraw the boundary of the TBOD.
I can do it if Liz wants to. Do you want to do it, Liz? I'll let Liz do it. This was our subcommittee work, and for the subcommittee was John O'Connor, Dave Nelson, Richard Malaby, Liz and myself, so if Liz wants to give an overview, this was part of the site walk we did back in, when did we do it, February?
February.
February downtown, if somebody wants, so Liz, do you want to?
So thank you. So as most of the board members will recall, we've been looking at, we were originally looking at ways to minimize zoning board variances for property owners in the TBOD, because when we expanded it, we inadvertently created issues for existing landowners. It was hard for them to do anything on their lots without a variance. So the board did the site walk. We looked at conditional use permits for the TBOD to see if that worked. When we sent the draft to legal, our attorney said that we might be infringing on property rights, so it would be best to look at it again. So the subcommittee met with the attorney, and that's part of the different discussion, but the board also talked about just moving some of the lots back into the CBD on the north side of Broadway, because it would revert the lots back to what they were and not infringe on the rights as much. So what's presented to you tonight is the lots that we're proposing. They're in the lighter blue color to move those back into CBD or Central Business District from Traditional Business Overlay District. There is one cobalt blue or very dark blue lot on the south side. That is the piece of property owned by Mr. Barker and has existing multifamily on it. At one point, that had been MHDR, and we moved it into the TBOD, so we're proposing to move that back to MHDR so that we're not creating any conflicts for him in the event he wants to do anything on that lot.
Anybody got any further questions? Mr. Connors.
I just, I mean, we're sure that nobody, nobody else is, has an, has an issue, you know, like what we're doing with that cobalt one, like nobody's, nobody doesn't want this to happen now.
No, no, I don't think so. Mr. Barker attended one of our workshops, I think, when we talked about, he was here at least one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, that was Barker, right?
I'm sorry, Barker.
Is that Barker?
Correct.
Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would note that those condos on the property are fairly recently constructed, so they're not likely to be subject to redevelopment in any near timeframe, and therefore it would be very speculative to assume that he could take advantage of the TBOD and probably would be happier in the MHDR.